"Oh, yes, oh, yes, town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight."
"What's the topic tonight, Prior?"
"Should the President's National Defense Program be adopted?"
"Where's the meeting, Prior?"
"Bring your questions to the old Town Hall."
"Welcome to Historic Town Hall in New York City for another spontaneous and unrehearsed discussion in which you can participate. From all over America, people have sent in questions on tonight's topic. Mr. Archie E. Bradshaw of Portland, Oregon, wants to know..."
"Are these preparations for defense? Or for another overseas war?"
"Mr. James Randolph Hillcastle of Jersey City, New Jersey, wants to know..."
"What is adequate national defense?"
"Miss Edna E. Tracrell of San Jose, California, wants to know..."
"Should we spend our money on airplanes or on battleships?"
These and many other questions have come from members of our radio audience. Here in Town Hall, over fifteen hundred representative American people have been discussing the topic of the evening: Should the President's National Defense Program be adopted? And they too have questions to put to the speakers. But before I present your moderator, I want to read a telegram which Town Hall has just received from John W. Alacoat, publisher of Radio Daily. It says, and we quote: "Radio editors throughout the United States and Canada have voted America's Town Meeting of the Air their favorite educational program in the third annual poll conducted by Radio Daily. Please accept my sincerest congratulations and best wishes for continued success." End of book. And speaking of winners, listen to the close of tonight's program for the announcement of the winners of the youth division of Town Hall's essay contest on "What Does American Democracy Mean to Me?" Now I present your moderator, Mr. George V. Denny, Jr., president of Town Hall. Mr. Denny.
"Good evening, neighbors. We're living today in a most unneighborly world. Our fellow men struggle against each other in three full-size wars. We Americans are pretty much agreed that we don't want to get into any of these wars. But in a time like this, we must certainly consider our own national defenses. President Roosevelt brought these defenses very forcibly to our attention in his budget message when he asked for just about $2 billion for the Army and the Navy. Now $2 billion is a lot of money. In fact, it's more than Uncle Sam has ever put into his Army and Navy except when they were actually fighting. These increases are recommended at a time when there's a loud cry for government expenses to be cut. Since both budget and national defense vitally concern you and me, I guess we'd better do some pretty straight thinking about it before we wire our congressmen one way or the other. No one questions the willingness of the American people to face these possibilities of new taxes for national defense, if it's necessary. What is it necessary? Just what do we want to defend? With what kind of Army, Navy, and Air Force can we best defend it? If we adopt the President's program, will we be building this kind of Army, Navy, and Air Force? To discuss these questions and others that members of our audience will put to them later on, we present tonight three distinguished speakers whose varied background enables them to bring to this topic a wealth of information and experience. The first is Congressman Melvin J. Moss, Republican of Minnesota, a leading member of the House Naval Affairs Committee and a believer in strong defenses. Congressman Moss, during the last war, was an aviator in the Marine Corps and flew up here from Washington tonight. Oswald Garrison Villard, recently returned from an extensive European tour, for many years editor of The Nation and now one of its contributing editors. Mr. Villard's recent book, Our Military Chaos, strongly condemns many of our present defense policies. As our third speaker, Major George Fielding Elliott of the United States Army retired, military expert and author of such books on the defense of America as the ramparts we watch and bombs bursting in air. Also, by way of surprise, we have the services of Mr. William T. Stone, Vice President and Director of the Washington Bureau of the Foreign Policy Association, who will act as special interrogator following the three speeches. And now I present to our first speaker, Congressman Melvin J. Moss of Minnesota. Congressman Moss.
"Mr. Moderator, it seems to me that there is only one fundamental question involved in this subject. And that is, shall the United States be prepared to defend itself? Or shall it turn its back upon the advice of George Washington and invite disaster by abandoning the traditional American policy of maintaining adequate defense? It's inconceivable that any considerable number of Americans are willing to sacrifice the United States by permitting inadequate defense. In fact, everyone professes to support an adequate national defense. Then the problem resolves itself into just what is adequate defense for the United States. There is some criticism that we have no fixed foreign policy and therefore no proper fixed chart for a naval and military program. To some extent, this is true. Under our form of government, it is not possible to have a rigid, unyielding, permanent foreign policy. Because of this, there can be no hard and fast, simple A-B-C formula for a fixed and permanent military establishment. Both our foreign policy and the size of our Army and Navy are dependent upon constantly changing world conditions. The fundamental factor determining the size and character of our military establishment in the United States is the defense of the United States. Our Army and Navy exist to support national policy. All other missions for which our Army and Navy must be prepared are essentially a part of that one objective, the defense of the United States. The Monroe Doctrine was promulgated and maintained because it was and is vital to our actual defense. The protection of our commerce is not a matter of the Army and Navy protecting the profits of some big American corporations. It is the absolutely vital necessity of maintaining uninterrupted access to essential strategic raw materials. Without these basic commodities, which are not available in the United States in commercial quantities such as tin, rubber, tungsten, chromium, manganese, our entire industrial machine would be forced to shut down. Unfortunately, while in general the United States is the richest nation in the world in developed resources, we are not completely self-sufficient. All of our wealth and resources are dependent, for their continued value, upon certain basic commodities. If essential imports are cut off, we would soon have a major slowdown of all industry and transportation, followed by complete collapse and almost universal unemployment a hundred times worse than any conceivable business depression. So equally important with the defense of our actual shores is the protection of our trade routes. Therefore, we must have a navy capable of carrying out national policy which includes protecting our commerce. A defense system merely capable of resisting actual invasion of our shores is no defense at all. Or under such conditions, we could be effectively blockaded and starved economically into surrender. The two oceans are a protection to us only so long as we are able to protect them. There is no danger of our launching upon an overseas adventure of a military character so long as our Army and Navy are merely adequate for our defense. Nor can we, as a nation, afford to have any military establishment less than one capable of being adequate for our defense. An Army or a Navy inadequate to successfully carry out their mission of defense are little better than no Army or Navy at all. The second-best navies of history are at the bottom of the ocean. Assuming that we all agree that we must have adequate defenses, we can examine the President's Defense Program in the light of adequacy. If his proposals for the improvement of the Army and the Navy do not exceed the minimum requirements necessary for an adequate defense system, then the answer must be that his program is needed and should be adopted. In answer to any question as to whether his proposal may be excessive, let me say that in the light of world conditions and the problem of defending our neutrality, the present program is very modest. It by no means meets all of the requirements to properly carry out our national policy. It provides, in fact, the bare essentials without which we are in actual danger. What constitutes an adequate defense depends upon the forces with which it must cope. Therefore, our Army and Navy requirements change as the armies and navies of the other nations change. If we are unprepared to resist any possible or at least probable aggressor, then we do not have adequate defenses. Let us examine first the pending proposals for our first line of defense, the Navy. After the World War, the best naval and diplomatic minds in the world met in Washington in 1922 and agreed upon a naval formula that was designed for the protection of each participating nation and so limited as to prevent any one nation from invading any other. It was properly known as the Five-Five-Three. The United States and Great Britain were to have equal tonnage and Japan three-fifths of the size agreed upon for our Navy. This was considered fair and safe. Our coastline is so much larger than Japan's that the difference in size of navies made them both equal in home waters for defense. If this formula provides safety for us, then when that ratio is changed or set, it changes that safety into danger. Japan saw fit to terminate that treaty and to drastically exceed it. If we are to adhere to the policy of maintaining an adequate Navy, we must not let ours fall below the safety ratio. The naval expansion program before Congress does not even provide enough new ships to fully restore the Five-Three ratio as it is, and it falls far short of providing parity with Great Britain. All evidence is that our Navy is far from being capable, even when expanded, of carrying on an overseas aggression. Nor is it capable even joining with Great Britain to police the world. It will, in fact, just afford us protection against only a single major power and then in only one ocean. There need be no fear that we are building any huge Navy to implement some new overseas foreign policy. The President is proposing no such Navy. We are expanding only because the other navies of the world are expanding, to do otherwise as criminal folly. We cannot ignore the fact that aggression is on the march throughout the world. Why do nations go to war? Either to take something that they need and do not possess, or to protect that which they have. It is foolhardy to think that we are immune. We are the richest plum in the world. We have enormous resources. We are the world's greatest market. And the United States has room to support millions and millions of the population of the overcrowded countries. We are closer to European countries than many of their present colonies, so distance alone won't save us. My time is about up, but I want to close by reminding you that it is far better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it.
"Thank you very much, Congressman Moss. Now I take pleasure in presenting our second speaker, Mr. Oswald Garrison Villard, contributing editor of The Nation. Mr. Villard."
"I am opposed to the President's proposals for further enormous military and naval expenditures because they are not based upon any clearly demonstrated need or any immediate danger. So far from endangering us, the wars in Europe and China are daily exhausting those who might possibly be our enemies. Having only recently returned from nearly four months in England, Holland, and Germany, I know as well, I think, as any journalist can, what is happening over there. Every man of importance I've talked with at the onseas, whether in private or official life, whether Englishman, German, Dutchman, or American, declare that if this war goes on for two years, European civilization will be in ruins and no menace to anyone. The English statesmen do not wish it in the war and prefer not to have us at their peace table. Ambassador Kennedy has also certified to this and has declared publicly, as in Boston, that it is a duty of the United States to keep out of this war. Then why this mad rush for all these new ships? Nothing could be more fantastic than Admiral Stark's declaration that we must build a huge armada now, lest if the Allies lose this war, we be assailed by the Joint Fleets of Russia, Germany, Italy, and Japan. If the Admiral had been abroad and seen the bitter dislike of the German people for the Russian alliance, the intense hostility of the Italians for the Germans and Japanese anger at their betrayal by the Nazis, he could not have made such a statement. It recalls Lord Salisbury's famous remark when he was Prime Minister of England that if the military had their way, they were forty-five miles against the moon. I am against these vast defense expenditures because they are based on no accepted national defense policy whatsoever. Because none of them bear any relationship to any established military program. We have never told Army or Navy what they will have to defend or how and where to defend it. How can they prepare intelligently to defend us? There can be no sound, sane, or adequate defense policy until we decide upon our foreign policy and its objectives. Who knows whether we are merely to defend our country or whether we are to police the whole of North and South America or whether we are to prepare again to throw two millions of men abroad? Who knows whether these fundamental questions are to be settled soon or not? To add now, three and a half billions of Mr. Roosevelt asked to our vast defense expenditure will give no guarantee whatever that these outlays will make for better or greater defense. They will merely add... They will merely add to the existing unintelligent, wasteful, uncoordinated, and undirected defense expenditure. Not even our Navy and War Departments are efficient. There is legislation pending to reorganize the Navy Department radically now before the Navy Committee of the House. General Johnson Haygood says of the War Department, "It is so involved that no Secretary of War has ever been able to understand it. And no Chief of Staff, however well-qualified, has ever been able to keep it under control or to know just what was going on among his subordinates. No human being, no archangel of heaven could operate a machine," he says, "that is as badly constructed and as complicated as the War Department is under the existing law. "If war should come, he averse, the War Department will collapse." Is this intelligent defense? Will it help the situation to spend more billions now? Although we've given the Navy nearly $2,600 million in the last five years, the Assistant Secretary of War reports that there are dangerous shortages in artillery tanks, combat cars, airplanes, machine guns, semi-automatic rifles, anti-tank guns, anti-aircraft guns, ammunition, gas masks, searchlights, telescopes, quadrants, gun carriages. Well, where has the money gone to? The War Department has not even fixed upon the ultimate design of tanks, light cannon, anti-aircraft guns, and other things. But our generals and war officials dwell upon these shortages on every public occasion to alarm the people and obtain greater and greater appropriations. They recall the lines of a Hindu poet who wrote: "Once I said to a scarecrow, 'You must be tired standing in this lonely field.' And the scarecrow said, 'The joy of scaring is a deep and lasting one, and I never tire of it.'" The last persons our Army and Navy scareers think of are the businessman and the taxpayer. Thomas Jefferson once told of being with a woman just from the funeral of one deeply lamented. "But, Mr. Jefferson," she said, "we have the consolation of knowing that everything was done for him that could be done. He was bled no less than twenty-six times. If our militaries and naval scareers had their way, our taxpayers would be bled twice twenty-six times each year." I object to the new naval appropriations because the ships cannot be laid down for lack of shipyards to take them. There are still a number of ships authorized that have not yet been begun. The two proposed battleships cannot be completed for seven or eight years. The utter lack of thinking and connection with this program is demonstrated by the proposal of some members of Congress that we should now build seventy thousand or eighty thousand-ton battleships. That was too much for even Admiral Stark, whose answer was that if we built them, we should first have to make over the geography of the United States and dredge all our harvests to permit them to enter. Already, Congress has struck out of the program fifty-two destroyers, six cruisers, and some submarines. And Admiral Robinson, chief engineer of the Navy, now assures us that this cut does not endanger the security of the country. Then why was Congress told that the national security, safety, demanded this being voted at once? The program is unnecessary because the United States is impregnable by reason of the marvelous protection given by the Atlantic and Pacific. Rear Admiral W.W. Phelps said, "Of course, there is no possibility ever of any hostile attack upon either of our coasts." Major Elliott has said as much in his book. General Haygood, General Rivers, Admiral Sims, who declared that in our next war we should anchor our battleships in the Mississippi and leave them there, have similar testifying. But my most important witness is Franklin D. Roosevelt himself, who wrote in the magazine Asia that we cannot make war upon Japan, nor Japan upon us because of the distance between us. And he appealed at that time for an abandonment of our attitude that we must always be preparing for war with Japan. I asked, just before leaving London, a British general who knows America well whether he had ever heard of a military or a naval officer in England or elsewhere who believed in the possibility of a serious attack upon or invasion of the United States. He replied, "Preposterous. It is utterly unthinkable, and every soldier and sailor knows it." "No, if we want sane defense for America, we should not appropriate $1 more for construction until we have made a careful study of what to defend and how to defend it by a national commission composed of civilians of a higher standing, a commission such as has been endorsed by the New York Times and General Johnson, among many others. To wait is to take no risk. If the war continues, it may demonstrate in this coming summer so the Germans think that a complete revolution enabled warfare is at hand. That we shall learn, for example, whether the battleship is finished or not. To spend one single dollar of public money unnecessarily in this crisis of the Republic is nothing less than a crime when we have nine millions of unemployed to maintain with a deficit four times the total cost of our government."
"Thank you, Mr. Villard. There we have... Now we're going to have the middle of the road Major George Fielding Elliott, who may say a plague or a blessing on both their houses. Whatever he has to say. Major Elliott, the platform is yours."
"Our national defense planning must always contain an element of compromise. It would be easy enough to design a plan which would include such a preponderance of armed force over any conceivable combination of enemies as should assure us absolute superiority. But it would not be easy to pay the resulting bills. Neither our nation nor any other can afford to divert to the non-productive purposes of armament more than is absolutely necessary for national policy and national safety. If national policy is moving in the direction of acquiring by force other people's territories or possessions, it will, of course, require a larger proportionate expenditure on arms than if, as in our case, its military objective is merely security. But even security, in today's world, is and seems likely to continue to be costly. There is no get-rich-quick road to security in time of peace, nor to victory in time of war. And it must be emphasized that military policy must have both these ends in mind. Military policy ought, of course, to go hand in hand with all other departments of state policy directed toward the great national objectives of the people. Since few will deny that our own national objectives just now are largely concerned with our very serious domestic and economic problems, it is obvious that an assurance of peace, of freedom from foreign interference and from the distractions and burdens of war is the contribution which we should design our military policy to make to the gaining of these greater objectives. But we ought not to forget that despite all our efforts, war may come to us again, as it has in the past, and that our military policy should, while primarily designed to ensure us against war by acting as a deterrent on others, be likewise designed, if war should come, to bring that war to a swift and victorious conclusion. On January 8th, the Chief of Naval Operations told the Naval Committee of the House of Representatives, "In the world today, it seems only a fair and moderate statement to say that the best interests of our nation will be served by keeping our own force sufficiently strong to be an effective deterrent against foreign aggression." He might well have added, "and sufficiently strong to deal swiftly and successfully with such aggression, should it nevertheless occur." Indeed, all planning for war and for the operations of war is based on the weighing of risk against advantage. It should be to our purpose to maintain such forces that shall always make the risk of attacking us outweigh any possible advantage to be expected therefrom. This essentially means the possession of naval strength sufficient to deal drastically with any attempt upon our shores, possessions, or neighbors. We cannot be directly invaded, having adjacent to us no great military powers, and we cannot be successfully attacked from the air by planes crossing the ocean. Not yet, at any rate. Any attack upon us is a matter, first of all, of transporting across the sea in ships the necessary troops, guns, materials, airplanes, and supplies. And when I said, as Mr. Villard remarked, that we were safe from invasion by reason of our two great oceans, I said that, on the basis of maintaining on those oceans a naval force adequate to command them. Otherwise, the oceans are a danger because they are the easiest and cheapest means of transporting troops, as well as goods. We ought, however, to bear in mind that the Navy itself is not everything. It requires bases and requires the support of shore-based aircraft and troops. This calls for a comparatively small but highly trained, fully equipped, and completely ready professional army. It does not require a great conscript army of millions which is useful only for overseas adventures. In general, it may be said that the present national defense program is moving along these lines. The naval increases called for are largely in cruisers, carriers, destroyers, and submarines. The apparent purpose is to constitute what we may call an Atlantic scouting force. Those, the battle force, centrally placed off the California coast, may move in either direction, westward toward Hawaii, direction, westward toward Hawaii, southward toward the Panama Canal and the Caribbean Sea, with always an adequate scouting force in advance of it. This is sound naval organization. Moreover, a proportion of cruisers and light craft will always be necessary for the Atlantic Ocean in order to give immediate protection to our coastwise shipping and to support and extend the defensive operations in case of a sudden emergency of the Army's aircraft. In this matter of aircraft, a word of caution may, however, be spoken. Modern aeronautical science is moving forward by leaps and bounds. Today's miracle is obsolete tomorrow. We have just seen the Germans in the full tide of war compelled to undergo the delays and difficulties due to the design and production of new models because they had no long-range fighting plane suitable for bomber escorts over the North Sea. It would be a mistake to assemble too many aircraft in time of peace, a lack of attention to economical principles which might well bring about a drastic revision of policy in the other direction. Similarly, we might well keep in check a tendency to build too large battleships. Excess tonnies means a great many eggs in one basket. Britain at the moment is seriously handicapped by an insufficient number of units in the battleship class, though she cannot maintain adequate strength to watch the German fleet, to maintain a minimum force in the Mediterranean, and still provide convoy escorts to deal with German armored raiders. Moreover, unless we are to build a fleet out of all proportion to our present needs, our battleships must be able to pass through the Panama Canal so that they may be employed with equal facility in either of the oceans whose control is vital to our safety. The War Department's budget calls for an increase in the regular army to a strength of slightly over two-hundred-and-forty thousand officers and men. And since I once calculated the required strength as two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, I can hardly criticize this proposal. Indeed, having regard to overseas garrisons, harbor, and anti-aircraft defenses at home, the necessary overhead for the War Department, and the provision of a reserve of mobile fighting power, ground and air, within the continental United States, such a figure seems to be adverbly adapted to our requirements and certainly not excessive for a nation of one-hundred-and-thirty billion inhabitants. It enables one great advance to be made, the organization and training of the mobile home forces in divisions and the fighting teams which are necessary in war. Much of the seemingly large expenditure now being called for, both military and naval, it is necessary to add, is occasioned by long years of neglect for whose results it is now necessary to compensate. And much of the criticism of the increased expenditures comes from the same sources whose former insistence on an unwise degree of disarmament has made these increases necessary. In one respect, however, I agree with Mr. Villard, and that is as to the need for a study of the whole national defense program and its relation to our domestic and foreign policy. I think that such a study should be carried on by a nonpartisan group representing the best available civilians as well as military experience. Indeed, I should like to see such a commission developed, later on perhaps, into something resembling the British Committee of Imperial Defense, representing the executive and legislative branches of the government and the armed forces. I would not, as Mr. Villard suggested in his book, exclude the military from such a body, as I do not think it can usefully function without the benefit of professional participation at every step. But then I do not share Mr. Villard's instinctive distrust of the motives and mental processes of military people. Certainly, a greater degree of coordination is absolutely necessary at this time, both between the services and between military policy and the national policy as a whole. And if this can be achieved, it will be the greatest possible forward step toward our security in a troubled world.
Thank you, Major Elliott. We pause now for station identification. Continuing America's town meeting of the air and our discussion of the question, should the President's national defense program be adopted? Now, before we ask the audience for their questions, I'm going to call on our special interrogator of the evening, Mr. William T. Stone, Director of the Washington Bureau of the Foreign Policy Association and its National Vice President. On the basis of his long study of America's defense policy problems, Mr. Stone will comment briefly on the talks you've just heard and ask special questions he wants our speakers to answer. Mr. Stone.
It seems to me that the three speakers we have just heard agree on at least one fundamental point. That point is that it is quite impossible to determine or even to discuss our national defense needs except in relation to foreign policy. But this fundamental point of agreement does not get us very far towards determining whether our defense is adequate, as there is no agreement on what our foreign policy is or what vital interests we expect our armed forces to defend. Mr. Villard, it seems to me, has complained that we have no clearly defined foreign policy, and he calls for a national defense commission to work one out for us. Congressman Moss tells us that it is quite impossible to have a fixed permanent policy under our system of government. We can have no simple A-B-C formula which will work for all contingencies. But he feels that our present program is a modest one which does not meet all of the requirements of national policy, whatever it is. Major Elliott seems to walk his middle road rather successfully and rather carefully. He agrees in part with Congressman Moss, though like Mr. Villard, he wants to clarify the relation between our national defense needs and our foreign policy. And he would support Mr. Villard's suggestion for a national defense commission. Now, it seems to me it might perhaps be useful tonight to constitute this meeting into a session of such a national defense commission and to ask the three speakers that we have just heard a few very sharp and specific questions on the relations between our foreign policy and our defense needs. None of them, it seems to me, have concisely answered the question, the precise question, is the program we have adequate in relation to policies? I should like to begin, perhaps, by asking a question of Congressman Moss. Congressman Moss did suggest two specific foreign policies, as I got it. First, the Monroe Doctrine, which has certainly been a traditional American policy which we have been willing to defend by force in the past. Secondly, the protection of our trade routes and commerce. He did not mention a third policy which is also important and very much on our minds today, and that is the open-door doctrine in the Far East, the maintenance of American equality of treatment in that area of the world. The question I would like to ask then of Congressman Moss is, is the Navy, projected in the present Vincent Bill, adequate to uphold the open door in Asia, and if not, should it be adequate?
In the first part of your question, it is not adequate to uphold the open-door policy. If by the open-door policy you mean equality in trade in China and in protecting a particular sphere of influence, it's not aimed at that, as a matter of fact. Our essential interest in the Orient is not the open-door policy in China, it is uninterrupted access to the raw materials of the Dutch East Indies and the Malay States. The program is designed to carry out that policy.
Is it adequate for that, Congressman?
No, it is not adequate for that. It's merely a step in that direction.
I should like to follow that, I think we're on an important point there, and I should like to follow that with a question, or perhaps a similar question, to Major Elliott, as to whether he thinks it is a vital interest that the United States should build a navy which is adequate to defend our trade routes to the Dutch East Indies where we get our rubber and our tin and other important strategic materials.
Well, it's not only a question of the Navy, Mr. Stone, it's a question of bases in the Western Pacific. Either we have bases there or we have to have some agreement with Australia or some other country which will cooperate with us and is placed in a similar position and with similar interests it'll keep them in line.
That raises the question of Guam. Do you favor the fortification of Guam as a base?
I don't under present circumstances because it looks to me as though we have a very fair chance to get a reasonably moderate government in Japan at the present moment, and I don't favor any policy just at this time that would give the military party in Japan a new hook to hang their coat on, so to speak.
I wonder if Congressman Moss would say a word about Guam.
I don't believe there's any single more important element in our whole defense or more vital to us right now than the protection of Guam and the development of a seaplane base. If we would fortify Guam, we would be absolutely invincible, we would be immune from attack from Japan or anyone else in the Pacific, and we might not have to expand our navy as much as we are otherwise going to have to do.
There's another interest which we have in the Far East which I would like Mr. Villard to say just a word on, and that is the Philippines. As you know, we have promised Philippine independence in nineteen forty-six. I should like to ask Mr. Villard whether he feels that we should fulfill this pledge, even if the Filipinos themselves should desire perhaps to stay under our flag. Mr. Villard?
I feel that we should live up to the word of honor which we gave from the beginning of our taking of the Philippines, that we should eventually give them their freedom. And I agree with what President Keizan has just said within three or four days, that he wants independence and he is willing to risk invasion by the Japanese or anybody else after we have cut them loose.
Thank you. I think we might turn now for a second to the Western Hemisphere and ask perhaps a somewhat technical question of Major Elliott, whether in his opinion the present naval program is adequate for our defense in the Western Hemisphere, not perhaps against any conceivable combination, but any immediately probable combination of hostile powers. Major Elliott?
I think that the present naval program, including the additions now proposed, is adequate for the defense of the countries of the Western Hemisphere under what might be described as ordinary circumstances, that is, unless there is some extraordinary combination of powers not now foreseeable that might in future attack us.
Would, could I just follow that up, Major Elliott, for a second? In your opinion, would the defeat of the British Empire or Britain's loss of her supremacy on the seas materially alter our own naval problem here in the Western Hemisphere?
I don't think it would materially alter it. I think we're prepared to deal with any situation which may arise, and I don't think that the British Navy has been for the last few years, at any rate, a very considerable factor in our calculation. I think we are rather inclined to depend for our defense on our own navy and not on anybody else's.
I'm wondering whether Admiral Stark, who gave expert testimony before the committee, in Congressman Moss's opinion, brought up this point. Would you say a word just about the testimony of Admiral Stark on the question of Western Hemisphere defense and a possible defeat of the Allies in the war?
Well, the Admiral testified that our naval policy now must encompass the complete and independent protection of the United States by the United States itself alone, which assumes, and as we all know it is a fact, that heretofore we have counted largely upon the British to defend us in the Atlantic. We can no longer count upon that, and it's very unwise for us to depend on any other nation, especially England to defend us. And the Admiral said that we should have, if we were to be completely self-defensive, a navy very much larger than we're proposing, but he did not advocate at that time for economy measures. But I don't believe, I agree with the major, I don't think our situation in the Far East materially affected whether England gets beat or not.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting back now to Mr. Denny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. That speaks our appreciation for your very pertinent questions. Now, we're ready for the questions from the audience. There are about fifteen hundred people here, ready to ask questions. Will you please rise and state the name of the person to whom your question is directed? Questions, please. Yes? You'll have to come around here to ask it. Let's have another question on this side of the house, on the balcony, yes?
In the present armament budget, the administration seems to be centering its interest abroad. And to me, that means some possible type of eventually entering into a war, inasmuch as the World War was fought to save the world from democracy and...
You read more.
...a war. And we see what is happening today. Why not stick to the Monroe Doctrine and center all of our interests to taking care of the one-third of a nation that is still ill-fed, ill-housed, and ill-floated?
As a matter of fact, the present defense program encompasses only that. It does not include any overseas expeditions.
Thank you. Next question. Back here. Yes? Mr. Villard?
In the present plans for the military appropriations, we see certain items for a system of power and light, organizations from the Atlantic to the Pacific, for a system of roads to be constructed and improved, and also for a system of improvements of inland waterways. Certain Washington correspondents have hinted, and I'd like your opinion on this, that this is merely an attempt by the President to put over something on the economy block by including items for public improvement which would otherwise have been certainly defeated by these people.
Thank you. The question is, Mr. Villard, in the present bill, there are certain items for public roads, improvement of inland waterways, power and light, and so forth. And the question is raised, is this not an attempt to put over certain public works on the economy block in the guise of national defense?
I should have to refer that to the congressional member of this debate.
Congressman Moss, will you speak on that? Yes, the question is that the bill has a number of items in it for inland waterways, public roads, and electric power and light. Is this for national defense or is it something that's being put over on the economy block? That's the question.
Oh, I don't think anything's getting put over on the economy block. No, a great deal of that actually does relate to national defense, particularly the question of power and its distribution, though I don't believe there's any substitutes there at all.
While you're on your feet, here's a question that comes from one of our listeners in Berkeley, California, Mr. Herbert Lysa. Do you think a commission should be set up by the federal government to inquire into the efficiency of the military and naval forces of the United States?
Well, I don't think it would do any harm. I believe it would be a splendid thing, but I think, of course, it should be done by a committee of Congress with perhaps civilian experts to assist them, but that's the proper constituted body to make such an inquiry, and I think it should be done.
Thank you. Next question.
Mr. Villard?
Mr. Villard?
In view of your opposition to the President's national defense program, do you believe a more appropriate program would be to lend and supply merchandise to China, up to one billion dollars, in order to humanize Japan and thereby accordingly reduce any danger to us from across the Pacific?
You get that, Mr. Villard? The gentleman wants to know if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to extend what to Japan, to China?
My question again, in view of your opposition to the President's program, do you believe a more appropriate program would be to lend and supply merchandise to China, up to one billion dollars?
To lend and supply merchandise to China, up to one billion dollars?
And thereby accordingly reduce any danger to us from Japan?
Yes. In order to humanize Japan and reduce any danger to us from Japan.
Anything that we can do to help China to bring about an ending of the war in China that we can legitimately and wisely do, of course, I favor.
Major Elliott?
How much larger navies than we have at the present time do you anticipate it would require if anything happened to the Panama Canal? And don't you think the largest, strongest...
I'm sorry, one question. We got it. I got it.
The considered opinion of the Chief of Naval Operations, which I see no reason to quarrel with, is that we're going to maintain two fleets which are not to cooperate, should be a ratio of five to three in the Pacific over Japan and four to three in the Atlantic over any conceivable combination.
While you're on your feet, Major Elliott, here's a question from Portland, Oregon, H.R. Shrank. Do we now have in this country an adequate supply of materials needed to carry on a war?
No, we do not. We're short of a number of items, and although attempts have been made to get appropriations to store these critical raw materials, we are severely short in a number of different items.
Thank you. Mr. Villard? Mr. Villard?
Isn't it possible that all this defense...
Got it.
Isn't it possible that all we hear about the defense is merely another method of trying to reelect the present administration?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that question's out. I ask you to keep to the question under discussion. Next question? Sorry. Next question.
Major Elliott?
Major Elliott?
For the victory of the democracies increase our national security?
Would the victory of democracies increase our national security?
Depend entirely upon how that victory was won and under what terms and what events had preceded it, and what sort of peace the democracies, as you've termed them, attempted to make afterward. If they made another peace like the Versailles Treaty, I don't think it would increase our security in the long run very much.
Thank you. Next question.
Don't you think that...
To who?
Major Elliott?
Major Elliott?
There's been much discussion of late about merging the Army and Navy Departments for the sake of efficiency. What is your view on that?
I don't think it would increase their efficiency at all. I think it would decrease it. When you have a Department of National Defense, you have to have a Secretary of National Defense who has to have a professional staff drawn from both services. And Admiral Darlin, who is now Chief of the French Naval Staff, remarked of a similar attempt in France, this just created a new staff to quarrel with the other two.
Thank you. Next question.
Mr. Villard?
Mr. Villard?
How do you propose to choose your committee for national defense?
How do you propose to choose your committee for national defense?
Appointed by various organizations interested in the question, from leading civilians, men and women whose names would carry weight with the press of the United States, I am opposed to the appointment of a congressional committee, helped as Congressman Moss suggests because so many of them have already had their minds made up for them.
May I ask Mr. Stone a question?
Yes, Stone. I'd like to ask a question.
We all seem to be so concerned with the open-door policy of Japan. Before the war, millions of tons of goods...
Whoop, whoop, whoop. Where's that? What's your question?
I'm coming to it.
Yeah, we have got time.
America also had an open-door policy before the war. Now our door is slammed shut and the bolt is rattled home. Now, do you, don't you think that turning about is fair play?
Yes. Mr. Stone? How about?
I think that in the Far East, the United States should not attempt to use force to maintain the open-door policy.
I'd like to address a question to each of the three speakers.
My lead congressman, that's a...
A very simple question. Would the carrying out of the naval and military defense program enable us to obtain a just peace after this war is over?
Well, I think it'll give us the only chance that we'll have of getting a just peace after another war.
Major Elliott? We're carrying out this defense program, give us a just peace after the war is over.
I agree with the congressman, if we're weak, we certainly will not find our opinion considered at all. That's the way this world is made these days.
Would the passing of the present bill ensure a just peace at the close of this war?
There's nothing to do with peace whatsoever.
Major Elliott?
Major Elliott?
What do you think in your estimation is a sufficient mobile troop force in this country?
Nine divisions and four cavalry divisions, two mechanized and two-horshed with the necessary corps troops.
Thank you. Very good. Now, that's not... Next question. Next question.
Representative Moss. Are you in favor of increasing the Armament Bill and cutting the Social Services and Relief Bill?
What about the relation to the Army Bill and Relief Services, if one has to be cut or the other? I guess that's just a borderline question. Where comes?
I don't think that the two are necessarily related. We must bend what is necessary to defend this nation, or you won't have any social services at all.
Thank you. Congressman Villard.
What has been mentioned are so necessary and vital for the country. For that particular reason, we need a navy. What are we doing about getting those resources in this country? Something like getting all the gold in the world? Why can't you get these resources?
If these resources are so necessary, what are we doing to get them to this country before we actually need it?
We have started a program of acquisition of essential strategic raw materials. I think last year, ten million dollars. But we couldn't possibly accumulate the necessary supplies to carry us through a long period of time, or we'd have our entire economy tied up in those supplies.
Thank you. Next question, not for Congressman Moss, but somebody else.
I'd like to direct this to Mr. Villard and Congressman Moss.
Well, let's start with Mr. Villard.
In the preliminary forum, someone spoke of increasing defense and consequent danger at home. Do you think that increased expenditures for defense wouldn't increase the danger of subversive activity at home from fascist groups?
Yes. Would increased national defense increase the danger of subversive activities at home?
Certainly not. Increased national defense would not have anything to do with subversive activities at home.
Thank you. Next question. Mr. Villard.
You spoke of the waste in building new naval battleships. Well, what about the putting to work of men, ship fitters, etc.?
Yes, you spoke of the waste of building battleships. What about the fact that it puts men to work?
Franklin Roosevelt said on December 1st, 1936, that nothing could be worse for our country than to try to bring about recovery, economic recovery, by going into a preparedness campaign of shipbuilding. It would lead only to war or economic disaster.
Congressman Moss. You stated in your address that you thought that the only important question this evening was to, shall the United States defend itself? Don't you think you're overlooking the point of the Philippines and Guam? In case we should increase our naval forces, the foreign nations would do the same, and therefore might swoop down on the Philippines. Don't you think that we should increase our forces in the Philippines?
Well, we have already voted the Philippines their independence, and in 1946, they will be a completely independent nation, so that I don't think that we have to encompass them any further as such in our military plan.
Thank you. There are a lot of ladies in the audience, but I don't see any hands up. What's the matter with them? Is there a lady here? Yes, there you are. Sorry, yes, please. Sorry.
Congressman Moss.
I'm Moss.
If we accept the new President's proposal, don't we run a risk of perhaps having a compulsory military training for our young boys and girls during peacetime?
Oh, not at all. No, we're nowhere near within that situation at all. We've had no difficulty in recruiting each expansion that we've had, and we're getting a very fine type of young man in both the Army and the Navy.
Thank you. Next question. What?
Congressman Moss.
No, I want one for somebody else. Yes?
Don't you think we would be much less worried about the present war conditions throughout the world if we had not squandered our material resources in the last twenty-five years, shipping our non-replaceable coal, iron, and oil to foreign countries who do not pay for it and ship us worthless gold which has sunk in a hole in the ground in Kentucky?
I don't think that makes very much difference. We're the most self-sufficient nation in the world today. We're far better off than any other of the great powers, and I can't see any particular economy in closing down on foreign trade. In fact, we have a good many firms in this country who employ a great many people who are dependent on foreign trade either as to their whole business or as to their margin of profit. And I would suggest that when you think that foreign trade produces no profit, you think of the millions that it employs.
Thank you very much, Major Elliott. I wish we had time for a few more questions, but I'm afraid we'll have to depend on the members of our listening audience to carry on the discussion.
Mr. Denny, I have a question that it seems to me only you can answer. Didn't you promise to announce the winners of your essay contest on the subject, what does American democracy mean to me?
Yes, Mr. Grau. We are ready tonight to announce the winners of the youth division, the prizes for which were made possible by a special gift to Town Hall of one thousand dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Walter E. Meyer of Washington, DC. Nearly six thousand essays were submitted by young people, and final judgment was made by a committee composed of Dr. John W. Studer Baker, Joy Elmer Morgan, Felix Marley, Aubrey Williams, and Elmer Lewis Kizer of George Washington University.
Yes, Mr. Denny, and the winners.
First prize of five hundred dollars in cash and a trip to New York goes to Frank W. Carr, seventeen-year-old student of Garfield High School of Seattle, Washington. Congratulations, Mr. Carr.
And the second prize, Mr. Denny?
The second prize of two hundred dollars in cash goes to Miss Mary Louise Ralph, who is a member of the graduating class of Roosevelt High School in Washington, DC. At this very moment, the commencement exercises are being held in her school tonight, and they are listening in to this broadcast as a part of their commencement program. Congratulations to you, Miss Ralph. Our third prize of one hundred dollars in cash goes to a man who will not hear this program for another week after it's been recorded, like all other previous town meetings this year, and sent via the China Clipper to Honolulu for broadcasting from the NBC station there next Thursday night. His name is Nobuyuki Nakasami of Launa, I hope that's right, High School, Maui, Hawaii.
But, Mr. Denny, what about the additional winners? The additional winners receiving honorable mention and ten dollars each?
I think every one of the nearly six thousand loyal young Americans submitting essays deserve our congratulations and thanks. They are...
Frank Jeffries of Denver, Colorado, two more students in Washington, DC, Louise Catherine Riggs and Agnes Berkhalter, Amy Reed of Lowville, Geraldine McPreston of Pontiac, Michigan, Eva Khan of Moncler, New Jersey, Kathleen Carroll of Mulvane, Kansas.
Susan Markris of Lakewood, Ohio, Myrna Frank of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Robert Henry Rice of Huntington, West Virginia, Two in Tulsa, Oklahoma, Bill Hutchinson and Betty Wheeler, John Burtwhistle of Englewood, New Jersey, Anna Louise Wellensseek of Syracuse, Nebraska.
Janet Thomas of Seattle, Washington, Alice R. Hopeen of Brooklyn, New York, Esther Allen of Philadelphia, Catherine Siegel of Lexington, Kentucky, Rosemary Graff of Chicago, and Patricia Martin of Plainfield, New Jersey.
Where can we secure copies of the prize-winning essay?
Mr. Kerr's prize-winning essay will be published in the February issue of Current History Magazine, which should be on all newsstands tomorrow. Later, it will appear in the publication Town Meeting and in the American Observer.
Yes, but what about the adult section of the essay contest?
Next Thursday night, we'll announce the final results in that section during our broadcast on the question, should we stay in the Philippines? Our speakers will be the Honorable Paul V. McNutt, former United States High Commissioner to the Philippines and now Administrator of the Federal Security Agency, and Nicholas Roosevelt, former Vice Governor of the Philippines, author and editor. Raymond Leslie Buel, editor of Fortune's magazine's Roundtable, will be our interrogator. Next week, we'll also make a special announcement about our cartoon contest, sponsored jointly by Town Hall and Liberty Magazine.
Tonight's discussion is printed in the Bulletin of Town Meeting, which you can purchase for ten cents a copy or for two dollars and fifty cents for the entire series of twenty-six. Send your questions or your requests to the Town Hall at 123 West Forty-Third Street, New York City. And don't forget to listen next Thursday night to the sound of the Crier's Bell, same time, same station.
Should we stay in the Philippines? Town meet next week.
Join the march of dying. Send a special greeting card to the President for his birthday on January 30th, and don't forget to celebrate the President's birthday by attending one of the parties held in his honor on January 30th. Do your part in the fight to stamp out infantile paralysis. This is a public service feature of the Blue Network of the National Broadcasting Company.